Chairman, go ahead. We're all here.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Good morning. It's kind of fun to navigate through our amazing technology to chair a meeting. Thank you very much. Thank you for all of you who have worked so hard through this pandemic and allowed this meeting to take place and accommodate different stresses and strains and schedules and health concerns. So pursuant to the Illinois Attorney General's guidance to public bodies on the Open Meetings Act during the COVID-19 pandemic dated July 2, 2020, county board members and the chairman may participate without being physically present in compliance with the established provisions. I am advised that there is a physical quorum present, so therefore I call the meeting of May 25, 2021, DuPage County Board to order. A physical quorum of the members is physically present. I will entertain a motion to permit those members not physically present due to the coronavirus to participate by video or teleconference. There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Garcia, Hart, Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante, Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan, Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy, Selman, Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay, Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez, Covert.
Here.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani and Eckoff.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. On to the order of Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask Member Brian Krajewski if you'd be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, liberty, just as for all.
Very nice. Please remain standing as I invite Reverend David Elliott from the Lutheran Church of the Master in Carroll Stream to lead us in invocation. Reverend Elliott.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chairman, and let us pray. Blessed are you, O God, Author of life, for you are the source of all wisdom and understanding, the source of all counsel and might. We give you thanks for this day, especially for the richness of good and that we are able to give and to receive. Blessed these public servants of DuPage County and all gathered here, that they may be beacons of your hope and peace to all whom they serve. Encourage them in their work and service so that they might grow and not grow weary, but be emboldened to serve the most vulnerable. For the challenges of our days are many and profound, yet you, O God of love, surely shall be our guide. Reveal yourself to us this day in the face of the one we might least expect, as you continue to break down the walls between your people. We pray all this in your holy name to whom belongs all honor and glory, now and forever. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Elliott. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Here.
Chavez.
Covert.
Here.
Desart.
Here.
DeCiani, Eckoff, Garcia, Hart, Krajewski.
Here.
LaPlante, Ozog.
Here.
Pachowski, Renahan, Rutledge.
Here.
Schworzy.
Here.
Selman, Tornatori.
Here.
And Zay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. On to the order of Chairman's Report. We have four items here today. First and foremost, I'd like to invite Nick Kotmeyer and Janet Williams to the podium there in the boardroom. We are very fortunate this morning to congratulate an employee on 45, yeah, that's right, 45 years of service to the county. I'm very happy to let Nick Kotmeyer tell us more about Janet Williams, a longtime, very knowledgeable member of the Building and Zoning Department. Take it away, Nick.
Thank you, Chairman. It is definitely my distinct pleasure to be here today presenting Janet Williams with her 45-year anniversary. She's joined by her husband, John, and back there as well. I mean, I know that you guys all realize it, but how extremely uncommon it is to be standing up here giving a 45-year anniversary, not just at the county, but anywhere, any business, anywhere. I can tell you it's so uncommon that I had to work with HR to actually come up with a 45, 45 anniversary award because we didn't have one. So it is so uncommon. So Janet began her career back in October 7 of 1974. So actually about, it's 45 and a half years right now, but we wanted to do this in person and we wanted to be here because it is such a, such an occasion to be here. Kind of put that in a little bit perspective for everybody. So in 1974, Richard Nixon was president. Cost of a gallon of gas was 42 cents. The Sears Tower was just getting finished and this 421 building we're at was not built yet. So it's amazing to think about how long ago that started. When she first started here, she started with a maps and plaits department and she worked at the old courthouse in downtown Wheaton. So, which I think now, if I remember, they've converted it to apartments or condos, I think, in downtown Wheaton. And then once the 421 building was completed, she moved in here. So Janet is the type of hidden asset every department wants and needs in their department. Her institutional knowledge is second to none here at the county. I mean, I can't tell you how many, I just accepted the fact that every department comes in and asks Janet, you know, how about this thing that happened 25 years ago or 30 years ago? How about this agreement? Can you find that agreement? I mean, it's almost like a challenge now because we bring up something that happened in 1980 and all of a sudden she produces a file that we don't know where it came from. But she can find everything. She has worked, I think she's worked with every department here at the county at one time or another on their special projects, something. I mean, it's amazing the, just her knowledge of how all the people working here, they all call her for trying to track stuff down. It's a fun asset to have and it's super valuable for our department as well as others. You can see everybody over there, and this is just a small sprinkling of the people that Janet works with on a daily basis. If it wasn't for COVID, this room would be packed. And it's a testament to, she's always willing to help people, always willing to do everything. You know, although Janet's involved, I mean, she's involved in every aspect in our department, every aspect of a lot of different departments, but primarily she, a couple of things that she works on, you know, quite often, special service area formation, every SSA we've ever formed in Public Works, Janet's the backbone for it. I mean, she gets everything lined up. Property, anything with property, she is the guru of it. Property liens, asset management, accounting, all of our property issues, easements, purchasing and selling land, all of the IGAs we work on, all of the agreements that we do, private agreements. She's basically our general historian and file management expert in our department as well as other departments. So, I mean, I could go on and on about what she does and the value she brings, but I mean, a 45-year employee with her history is irreplaceable. I mean, it's one of those that it's an asset that, that we're proud to have. On a personal basis, so she does, I know, I talk to her all the time. She's, she works late, but she volunteers all the time with a huge number of groups across the county. And I listed some of them that I know, Care Center, Scares, Girl Scouts, Glen Allen Park District. She's hugely involved all over. A really interesting note, and I know there's a really neat picture down at her desk, way back in President Bush's year, Bush II, she actually was honored, her and her daughters, as Girl Scouts were honored in the Rose Garden. And there's a picture of her accepting an award with her daughters in the Rose Garden from President Bush II. So it's kind of a neat picture. It's fun and she's very proud of. So, you know, from everybody at DuPage County, especially me, Janet was one of the first people I actually met when I started working here way back when and she was an old veteran, expert at that time, teaching me the ropes back then. So I would like to personally thank you for what you've done for DuPage County, what you've done for our department and the value you bring to everybody. So thank you.
That's awesome.
I do have the 45-year service, but the mic is yours. Whatever you'd like to do, it's, you have the honor.
This is not something I do very often, but I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunities to do all the things I've done for our department and the knowledge that I've gained here at the county I've utilized in our community and the 22 years of Girl Scouts and the 26 years of environmental clubs and the land purchases to create a park. And it allowed me to go to Washington into the Rose Garden at the White House. So it's been a blessing in all aspects and I've been able to bring the county, what I've learned here and what we do to all these different departments and outside agencies. So thank you very much.
Okay, that's awesome. Moving on to our next order, it's the 100th birthday celebration. Congratulations to Peter Gilia. I'd like to invite Peter and Steve Fixler to join us by Zoom. I can see Peter there. Welcome, sir. We're honored to have you. As we congratulate people for their service, we could not pass up the chance to ask one of our community treasures to join us today. We are very honored to have World War II veteran Peter Gilia of Lombard join us so that we may wish him a happy 100th birthday in advance of the big day on May 30. For some of the newer board members, allow me to provide a bit of history regarding Peter's service to our nation. He served in Europe during World War II as a tank commander. And the reason why I'm providing this bit of history to our newer board members, not because they don't know their histories, because we have honored Peter and recognized his unique service and commitment. He served in Europe during World War II as a tank commander in the 735th Tank Battalion. Due to his heroism and bravery, Peter was awarded the Bronze Star and the Purple Heart. He then returned to DuPage County and has been a steadfast member of the Lombard VFW and a longtime friend of our Veterans Assistance Commission. I hope you will all join me in a round of applause and a standing ovation for one of our own, a member of the greatest generation, Peter Gilia, as he prepares to celebrate his 100 years. Let me invite Peter or Steve. If you'd like to offer some remarks, please feel, please feel free to, to join us either via Zoom or in person. Peter, it looks like you're ready.
Say thank you.
I did.
Say it again. Screen it. Go ahead.
And thank you for, and trust it, your future will be followed by nothing but goodness. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you. I like that. Did I get that okay? I did. That was awesome. Thank you, Steve.
Peter says thanks. He really appreciates it. And this Saturday at 11 o'clock or 10 o'clock, they're doing the drive-by in front of his house here, the birthday drive-by. If anybody's interested, you can, you can join it and everything.
It's 12, Steve.
12 noon. I'm sorry, 12 noon.
Any details they can get through you, Steve?
They can? Yeah, they can get it through me. If they want the details through me and I'll contact them with Dennis Jensen, who's running it and everything.
Fabulous.
So contact me. All right?
Well, thank you, Steve, and congratulations again. Peter, you are our hero, man. We love you.
There you go. Wave again.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along, we've got a, another presentation this morning. We have the Wear Orange Proclamation, Wear Orange Proclamation. And I'm going to invite Member Julie Renahan, Holly Blastic, Alicia Schimmel, and Tanya Murray to the podium. This morning, Member Renahan, Chair of the Judicial and Public Safety Committee, is asking us all to wear orange on June 4. June 4. So I got my green on today. Don't want to wear orange very often, being an Irishman, but on June 4, I'm going to wear orange for sure. This is a new idea and we welcome it. It's being offered up as a suggestion to draw attention to the lives lost due to gun violence. Joining Julie Renahan today are Holly Blastic, Alicia Schimmel, and Tanya Murray. They're in leadership roles with the Illinois Chapter of Bombs Demand Action, a, an advocacy group that works to prevent gun violence. I will read the proclamation and then I'm going to ask the leaders of this organization and Member Renahan to offer a few thoughts if they so choose. We would welcome them. So here's the resolution. It goes as follows, the proclamation. So whereas more than 100 Americans die by gun violence every day, and in an average year, 829 Illinois residents die by gun violence, and whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries, and whereas local governments across the nation, including DuPage County, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions because elected officials' most important responsibility is protecting public safety in the communities they serve. And whereas, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding residents goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas elected officials and law enforcement officers know their communities, recognize local criminal, criminal activity and how to address it, and understand how best to educate responsible gun owners and keep their residents safe. And whereas, gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate violence after more than a year of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. And whereas, people across the country are asked to wear orange on the first Friday in June 2021 in recognition of Hadiya Pendleton, Hadiya Pendleton, who was shot and killed in January 2013 at 15 years old, senseless act of violence. And whereas, Hadiya's friends ask their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange because it is the color that hunters use to announce themselves to others in the woods, symbolizing the importance and value of human life. And whereas, by wearing orange on June 4, we can help raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the DuPage County Board and members of the County Board, do hereby declare the first Friday in June, June 4, 2021, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And we encourage all residents to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. It is approved this 25th day of May 2021 in Wheaton, Illinois. And I'll turn it over to Member Renahan, please.
Start over again. Thank you, Chairman, and then thank you, County Board, for being receptive to this new idea. I'm so grateful that a group of elected officials can bring awareness to gun violence prevention. We can remember Hadiya and all of the other victims of gun violence with this proclamation by wearing orange. The real work, though, is done at the grassroots level. So I have Alicia, Tanya, Holly, I've met so many, many great advocates, groups like Bombs Demand Action in every town, students with March of Our Lives events. I'm very touched by your activism and all you do. And I just want to turn it over to you because I know you have much more to share than I could ever say. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for having us. We are so honored to be here. My name's Alicia Schimmel and just want to take a quick second to say why we're here and why we wear orange. For me, the issue of gun violence prevention is personal. I'm a ship captain by trade. I grew up driving boats. My dad was also a ship captain. We had a family business doing architecture tours and public and private charters up and down the Chicago River and out to Lake Michigan. On August 14, 1999, I was driving a boat along the river. My dad was on his way to pick me up from work when he was stopped at a railroad crossing and someone parked their car behind his, walked up to his truck and shot him five times, twice in the head and three times in the arm. I managed to make it to the hospital right before he died, but 21 and a half years later, his murder is still unsolved. My story is not unique. This same story repeats itself over 100 times every day here in our country. As we said before, over 100 Americans are killed every day to gun violence in the U.S. In fact, more Americans have been killed by guns since 1968 than all U.S. wars combined. And the gun homicide rate in the U.S. is 25 times higher than that of other developed nations. And it's costing us $34.8 million a day to deal with the after effects of gun violence. Orange is the color that hunters wear so that they don't get shot. And maybe for one day, we wear orange so that we are also not one of those 100 Americans that lose their lives every day. And we wear orange to honor those we have lost. By wearing orange and bringing awareness to this epidemic of gun violence, we can do what our part to put an end to it. I don't want anyone else to experience what I have in losing a family member in 100% preventable death. So thank you so much for having us and thank you for declaring June 4 Gun Violence Awareness Day in DuPage County.
Thank you all so much for having us here. I am just blown away with just excitement that you guys are honoring Wear Orange. Because today, gun deaths is a pandemic that has been happening much longer than COVID. And unfortunately, since COVID started, the numbers have continued to rise. It is way beyond mass shootings and city shootings. It is also happening out here in the beautiful suburbs. Domestic abuse shootings has increased. Suicide rates have increased. And accidents, because the guns are not locked up, unintentional shootings are happening. Children and teens across the country, including Illinois, is happening more often than car accidents. Children and teens are dying in the United States more often than car accidents. That should not be happening. And what we need to do is to get louder. We are not anti-gun. We are not against the Second Amendment. This is a nonpartisan issue where Americans are killed every day. And we need to do something to stop these over 100 deaths happening every day. So I am honored to be here. Thank you so much for honoring the color orange and the gun violence. Thank you.
Okay, very nice. Our, we have a final presentation this morning and I'd like to invite our friend Julie Yurko to the podium. And as she makes her way up there, I'd like to welcome the President and CEO of the Northern Illinois Food Bank. Each year, we hear about how this organization is working to fight hunger in our community. And Julie, it's, it's been a year like no other. And I'm delighted that you're here with us today and thank you for all the good work that you are doing. And I'm sure this past year was a challenge to you and your organization like no other. We're eager to hear about your group's progress, so please take it away.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Chairman, and certainly it has been a year like no other for all of us. I want to start by thanking this County Board. Such a longstanding partnership we have had trying to solve hunger in all of our communities. And in the last year, you provided us with $625,000 of funding that has helped us respond to the increasing need that we've seen in DuPage County. Your 2020 funding helped us provide more than 400,000 pounds of food, highly nutritious food and groceries out to our member agencies in DuPage County. We were also able to purchase produce and dairy boxes for our pop-up markets in Glendale Heights. And we were able to use some of this funding to provide agency capacity grants out to our member agencies. We also have a commitment of CSBG funds of $200,000 that will be used to purchase food in the coming year for all of our agencies. And of course, we're grateful to you all because you provided some direct funding, CHER's funding, to several of our member agencies, our food pantries, soup kitchens and shelters in DuPage County. From July, which is the start of our fiscal year, through April, we have provided 15.8 million meals here in DuPage County. That's a 19% increase or 2.6 million more meals than we had done in the year previous. This is our second-largest county for food distribution across our 13 counties. 13.8 or 87% of these have gone to our member agencies. As you know, they are extraordinary, our member agencies, and we are their primary food supplier, providing them not only with some of our purchased foods or our online shopping list, but also donated food, government commodity food, and matching them with local retailers through partnerships managed by the food bank. We are serving, on average, 19,000 households every month here in DuPage County. That's almost 70,000 individuals. That's a 12% increase over last year. And these numbers do not include the families that we're serving, along with our children and our seniors through our direct distribution programs and our mobiles and pop-ups. Since July, we've been serving an average of 2,900 households every month through those programs. These numbers mean a lot to us because we are trying to reach everybody in need. However, it's truly the individual story that really touches us and the privilege to be able to go out, as I've been going out every week serving at our pop-up markets. The story I'd like to share with you actually happened on January 2. And it was one of our pop-up markets. And what's significant is, first of all, it was January 2. And typically, we're not doing five, five distributions we did that day on January 2. So close to the holidays. Typically, we don't have that kind of need where we need to be out at that level. It was also significant because it was freezing. January 2 was a very, very cold day. And literally the parking lots that we were in were covered with ice. And then it was significant because we were in Lyell, Illinois, where the Navistar parking lot, right? Expecting to serve 500-plus families that morning. There wasn't a super long line. It was good because it was cold. But the line was long enough, maybe about 15 minutes. A white minivan pulled up to get food and literally as we were filling the white minivan with food, the car ran out of gas. And I went around to try and inspect, try to see the dignity of our neighbors. I went around to talk to the driver and it was a young mom. And she was sobbing. She was literally sobbing in her car. And I said, how can we help you, right? I have about 40 volunteers here and every one of them will buy you gas. How can we help you? And she threw her tears. She said, don't worry, don't worry. I've just called a friend. Friends never give me gas. She said, but could they push my car out of line? Absolutely. So we pushed her van out of line and about 45 minutes later, her friend came and put some gas in her car. I went up to her and said, you know, how you doing? Anything else we can provide for you? We have extra food. Would you like some additional food? And she said, actually, it's been really, really low, right? Our income level is really, really low right now. And so yes, I would love a gas and additional food. And so I went and I opened the back of her white minivan and up popped three faces. And I was guessing, I'm guessing they're about 6'3" and then an infant and a car seat. And the one was like, hi! She goes, we need gas. And I said, you've got gas. And I said, and how about some oranges and some apples and some other good food? Oh, yes, I love those. And so we literally, any inch there was in the remaining taxi, we put food in. And then off they went. A young mom on January 2 in the freezing cold came out and waited in the line for food. And she brought her papers. And that has been heartbreaking to see. There have been so many days. It has nearly broken us. But we keep going. For this coming year, now the meal gap is telling us that 7.8% of DuPage County residents will be food insecure. That's over 72,000 people. That's an increase of 28% over COVID. For our kids, it's a For our kids, it's 8.1, that's over 70,000 children, and that is an increase of 52%. A 52% increase for our babies that are hungry. Thankfully, in the past couple of months, we have seen the numbers decline slightly. Here, as a high, it's 52% back in the fall. So, we're seeing the lines get shorter, thanks to the stimulus checks and some of the other benefits we're getting through the American Rescue Act. But we know that this pandemic is going to have a very long tail, that for our families who are already low-wage families, and who are already struggling to make ends meet, it's going to take their New Year's rebuild, and we will be here for them. This year, we're going to distribute 100 million meals. Now, the only food bank in our product agencies are going to distribute 100 million meals in the service of the federal government of Illinois. In the coming year, we're expecting that to drop between 83 and 89 million. Our biggest concern right now is food supply. 24% of food we distributed in the last year was given to us free of charge to the federal government and the coronavirus food assistance program, and that is ending literally this week. 24 million meals are going away this week. But we have faith, and we are leaning in, and we are increasing the amount of food we're purchasing, and we're going to go out and beg our donors for more, and we are going to keep going. And I cannot tell you how much the work we do here happens because people like you choose to get involved, and you've been involved with us for decades. You've been supporting us for decades. I have to give a shout-out to Mary Keating for her partnership with us. She's been extraordinary, and I just wanted to say that together, we will move forward, and we will continue to serve all of our families in need. So, thank you all, and God bless.
That's fantastic, Julie Yurko. Thank you for doing God's work. I want to move into Chairman's remarks, just to offer a few remarks here. As we conclude the month of May, we generally host a Memorial Day ceremony right here on our campus. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, this ceremony, once again, has been canceled. However, as many of you may remember, our enterprising IT department employees, including Dave Roberts, created a digital, interactive memorial wall at our website, dupageco.org. And you can find it there. The webpage on our DuPage County site allows friends and family to create their own honor posts, placing the name, hometown, military affiliation, photos, remembrances of DuPage men and women who lost their lives in service of our country. We invite the community to visit the site, post memories, share photos, stories, and learn a bit about some of our national Memorial Day history. We are certainly united in our desire to honor DuPage men and women who gave their lives while serving as members of the U.S. Armed Forces. Again, that webpage is dupageco.org, and it's linked from the front page of our website. Finally, I'm proud to announce that we recently learned, just hot off the presses, that DuPage County has received an achievement award, achievement award, from the National Association of Counties. We were awarded in the category of Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation for our initiative with the College of DuPage, our conversation on race, equity, diversity, and inclusion. We recently finished taping our final panel discussion with College of DuPage, which I co-moderated with Dr. Nah Tanya Montez. It will be released on June 19th. I thoroughly enjoyed it. I enjoyed every chapter of this past year as we celebrated the various recognitions and chapters and important lessons attendant to Juke teeth. I have to say that on the last panel discussion that I co-moderated, I really encourage you to tune in. Our guests were very honest and very genuine, and I took some really valuable lessons from that experience. They shared their feelings, they provided thoughtful ideas about how we can continue to achieve equity, diversity, and inclusion. I really want to thank our staff and the College of DuPage for their hard work on these blogs, videos, historical accounts, and online programs. I'm extremely proud that even during the pandemic, our initiatives continue to garner national attention, and I really feel like the, you know, our commitment to this exercise, this learning exercise, this experience was so valuable, and I think with all due respect, it was much more substantial than simply just giving a day off to people. I think it was a, we accomplished our goal. It's not over yet, but I really am very proud that it was a very, very substantive learning experience. So, that concludes my remarks. That concludes the Chairman's report. We move on to the order of business entitled Public Comment, and I will turn it back over to the clerk to lead us in public comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one online public comment submission by Gerald Gentile of Elmhurst. Subject is hostile work environment. Comment: As a citizen of DuPage County for over 50 years and a former dedicated and respected employee of DuPage County, I am compelled to express the hostile tenor and utter disrespect afforded me by the HR Director, Margaret Ewing. The employee manual expressly states the following: See, harassment based on other protected classes is also strictly prohibited. Under this policy, harassment is defined as verbal or physical conduct that demeans or shows hostility or aversion toward an individual because of their race, color, religion, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, order of protection status, national origin, age, disability, marital status, citizenship, or any other characteristic protected by law, and that (1) has the effect of creating an intimidating, hostile, or offensive work environment; (2) has the effect of unreasonably interfering with an individual's work performance; (3) otherwise adversely affects an individual's employment opportunities; (D) harassment includes but is not limited to epithets, slang, nicknames, slurs, negative stereotyping, threatening, intimidating, or hostile acts, denigrating jokes, and written or graphic material or material that is transmitted electronically that demeans or shows hostility or aversion towards an individual or group. Ms. Ewing, in her capacity as HR Director and using the county phone systems, called me on 6/26/20 in the afternoon about a personnel matter of great concern to me. Ms. Ewing, without deference or respect, ordered me back to fieldwork. Mr. Gentile, you will be going back to fieldwork. Ms. Ewing, Chairman Cronin, and the public, her terse and hostile inflection harmed me and impacted my emotional health and self-worth and performance. This was a hostile interaction that must not be tolerated. I felt as if I was an indentured worker. I reported this feeling immediately to slug members of this board and still await a call or response. Her capacity as HR Director and her conduct with me should be addressed so that this never happens again in the heat of a pandemic, and as a senior citizen, her lack of compassion and empathy was heartless and a sad reflection on this board. I am not, as I told her, to be ordered in a hostile nature, and the board's acceptance of her behavior is complicit to furthering her egregious conduct. I implore the county to investigate this concern. Thank you. That concludes the public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We move on to the next order of business entitled Consent. Is there a motion?
So moved Chaplain.
Second, Rutledge.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call a roll.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Machowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzie.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. On to the order of county board, in Member Ashley Salmon's absence. My understanding is Member Chaplain will lead us.
Yes. Thank you, Chairman. I move to approve CBR 028521, Resolution, Expanded Board of Review, Appointment of 11 Members.
Second, Garcia.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Machowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzie.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplain.
Thank you, Chairman. I move on CBR 028621, Resolution, Appointment of Chester Pogge to the Stormwater Planning Committee, County Board, District 6.
Second.
Second, Desart.
There's a motion and a second. Is there a request for leave?
Leave.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplain. We move on to the next order of business entitled Finance. Finance, finance, not finance. Member Liz Chaplain.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 027321, Resolution, Revision to the Personal Budget of the Sheriff's Office.
Second, Desart.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Machowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzie.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplain.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 027421, Resolution, Additional Appropriation for the General Fund Company 1,000 in the amount of $156,450 for the Sheriff's Office.
Second most favorable role, Desart.
Okay, there's a request to adopt the second most favorable, the most favorable role call, which included the motion and the second, that, and asking for leave, leave is granted. Sometimes I like to punctuate the procedure, just for the record here. Please proceed, Member Chaplain.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 027521, Resolution, Acceptance and Appropriation of HUD 2020 Continue Para Homeless Management Information System Grant Agreement in the amount of $188,556.
Second most favorable role.
Request for leave, leave is granted. Member Chaplain.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 028421, Resolution, Placing Name on Payroll.
Second most favorable role.
Leave is granted.
Comment?
Yes, please. Member Desart.
Thank you, Chairman Cronin. I just wanted to say, I had questions during Finance on the intern pay, and we got answers between sessions, so thank you so much to HR for providing the answers about internship salaries. Thank you.
Any other questions? Member Chaplain?
Nope, nope.
We're...
We're on leave. So, we have a motion and a second.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplain, please proceed.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 029321, Resolution, Budget Transfers 52521 from various companies and accounting units.
Second most favorable role.
Request for leave, leave is granted. Member Chaplain.
Thank you. I move on FICO 000621, Amendment to Resolution, FIP 003221, issued to Bond, Dixon, and Associates PC to provide continued and expanded representation in matters related to the specialized area of election and law, increase in the funding amount of $100,000.
There's a motion, is there a second? Is there a request for leave? Leave is granted. Mr., Member Chaplain.
Thank you, Chairman. I move on FICO 049521, Amendment to Resolution, FIP 028219, issued to Rock Fusco and Conley LLC to provide continued legal services related to representation as special assistance states attorney to increase funding in the amount of $65,000, not to extend services through November 30th, 2021.
Okay. Is there a motion? Seconded, seconded, request for leave? Do I hear leave? Leave? Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Chaplain.
Yes, thank you. We move back to budget.
On to the order of next, the next order of business entitled Budget. Member Chaplain.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I move approval of Item A, Budget Presentation Instructions for the 2022 Budget.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Machowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzie.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplain.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 029021, Resolution, for the Budget Calendar. I'm going to amend it. There was a typo on the original Budget Calendar under the section where the county board chairman presents his FY 2022 budget. Originally, it was September 21st, 2021, but that should be September 28th, 2021.
Okay, so with leave of the body, Member Chaplain moves, seconded by Member Rutledge, to correct what appears to be no more than a Scrivener's error. Hearing no objection, leave is granted. Please proceed, Member Chaplain.
Thank you. I move on Item C, FIR 028921, Resolution, Financial Budget Policy.
Sorry, Member Chaplain, I think that was the leave on the amendment. I think you need to still have a vote on the second item.
Okay, okay, so now it's a vote on the, as amended. I'm sorry. Okay. I move approval of FIR 029021, as amended.
There's a motion and a second. Is there a request for leave? Leave is granted.
And finally, I move on FIR 28921, Resolution for the Financial and Budget Policies.
Second most favorable role.
Leave is granted. Thank you very much, Member Chaplain, a fine report. On to the order of development, Member Sam Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. I move approval of DCR 282-21, Resolution, DCR 282-21. This is an additional appropriation for the Building and Zoning and Planning Fund in the amount of $749,600.
Second, Garcia.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
is a zoning hearing officer and Development Committee's recommendation to approve a variation to allow a non-heart service driveway.
Second most favorable role.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tornatori. Another fine report. On to the Order of Economic Development. Member Amy Chavez.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item was actually called in Finance for reconsideration in two weeks.
Okay. So, you have a very short report today.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Chavez. On to the Order of Health and Human Services. Member Renahan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of HHS R 27621, Recommendation for Approval of the CDBG Modification with South Group LLC Maple Court, clarifying in an affordability period of 20 years.
Second, Schworzy.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
D'Ziani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Chowsky.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
D'Ziani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Chowsky.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
D'Ziani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski. 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 Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Rannahan?
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 029021, Resolution, um, for the Budget Calendar. It, I'm going to amend it. Um, there was a typo on the original Budget Calendar under, um, the section where the County Board Chairman presents his FY 2022 Budget. Originally, it was September 21st, 2021, but that should be September 28th, 2021.
Okay, so with leave of the body, Member Chaplin moves, seconded by Member Rutledge, to correct what appears to be no more than a Scrivener's error. Hearing no objection, uh, leave is granted. Please proceed, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move on, um, Item C, FIR 028921, Resolution, uh, Financial Budget Policies.
Sorry, Member Chaplin, I think that was the leave on the amendment. I think you need to still have a vote on the second item.
Okay, okay. So, now it's a vote on the, has amended. I'm sorry. Okay. Um, I move approval of FIR 029021 as amended.
Second most favorable role.
And a motion and a second. Uh, is there a request for leave? Leave is granted.
And finally, I move on FIR 28921, Resolution for the, um, Financial and Budget Policies.
Second most favorable role.
Leave is granted. Thank you very much, Member Chaplin. A fine report. On to the Order of Development. Member Sam Tornatori?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. I move approval of DCR 282-21, Resolution, DCR 282-21. This is an additional appropriation for the Building and Zoning and Planning Fund in the amount of $749,600.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
D'Ziani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Chowsky.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
D'Ziani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Chowsky.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
D'Ziani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski. 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 Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Rannahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of JPS P 11421, Contract with Dr. Tara Fulmer for Evaluation Offenders That Are Refused by the Court for Probation and Court Services, June 13th, 2021 through June 12th, 2022, not to exceed $97,500.
Second most favorable role.
Leave is granted. Member Rannahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of JPS P 11621, Approval of Contract Purchase Order with Duregraphics and Custom Filing Inc. to Provide 2022 Case Filing System for the Circuit Court Clerk, not to exceed $34,153.89.
Second most favorable role.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Rannahan. On to the Order of Public Works. Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first of all, I'd also like to thank Janet Williams for her 45 years of service to DuPage County in the Building and Zoning Department. I also want to thank staff and my fellow board members for their work on the Dynamic Industrial Services contract. Uh, it was $100,000 lower than the next bidder. Uh, we, staff worked with the Painters Union, and one of the issues is that this contractor, while they have a presence in Illinois, is headquartered in Indiana. And thanks to staff and my fellow board members, we now have an agreement where they will be working with our painters in Illinois, and there will be Illinois people hired for this job. So, I thank them. Uh, going forward, my first item, F, I move for approval of FMP 011921, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract to Airway Systems Incorporated for Semiannual Cleaning of the Kitchen Ducks, Hoods, and Fans for the Judicial Office Facility, JTK Administration Building Jail and Care Center for Facilities Management for a Two-Year Period, May 26, 2021 through May 25th, 2023, for a Total Contract Amount not to Exceed $35,196 per Lowest Responsible Bid.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ozog.
Yes.
Chowsky.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
D'Ziani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Chowsky.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
D'Ziani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Chowsky.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
D'Ziani. Eckoff. And Garcia.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Member Hart. On to the Order of Transportation. Member Don Pachowski.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I would move to approve DTR 27921, An Additional Appropriation for the Local Gas Tax Fund, the County Unit 3500, for the amount of $749,600.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chowsky.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
D'Ziani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski. 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 Kuduski.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Pachowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve DTR 28021, An Awarding Resolution to H&amp;H Electric Company for LED Traffic Signal Head Replacement at Various Locations within DuPage County for an estimated county cost of $198,065.12 per low bid.
Second most favorable role.
Leave is granted, Member Pachowski?
Thank you. Move to approve DTR 28121, An Awarding Resolution to Shoreard Asphalt Services for Bloomingdale Road, Geneva Road Intersection Improvements, an estimated county cost of $685,153.28 per low bid.
Second most favorable role.
Leave is granted, Mr. Pachowski?
Move to approve DTR 28321, An Awarding Resolution to H&amp;H Electric Company for Traffic Signal Uninterrupted Power Supply and Communication Upgrade at Various Locations within DuPage County for an estimated county cost of $777,668.12 per low bid.
Second most favorable role.
Leave is granted, Member Pachowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve DTR 46C20, Amendment to a Resolution for the Re-execution of a Local Public and Agency Agreement between the County of DuPage and Illinois Department of Transportation for Improvements along 31st Street with No Change in County Cost.
Second most favorable role.
Leave is granted, Member Pachowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve DTR 158821, Amendment to a Resolution to Copenhagen Construction for the 2021 Sidewalk Improvement Plan for a Scrivener's Error.
Second most favorable role.
Leave is granted, Member Pachowski?
Move DTP 11521, a Contract to Max Body Shop Pay for Auto Repairs as Needed by Department of Transportation, not to exceed $85,000, which is per low responsible bid.
Second most favorable role.
Leave is granted, Pachowski?
Lastly, Mr. Chairman, move to approve DTP 11821, a Contract to H&amp;H Locker Inc. for Professional Construction Engineering Services along Grand Avenue from Lake Street for a Contract not to exceed $658,972.45 for Professional Services.
Second most favorable role.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Mr. Pachowski. A fine report. We move on to the next order of business entitled Discussion. We're all familiar with this provision pursuant to Public Act 990646, Pension Obligation Projections Required by the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act. Is anyone seeking recognition on this issue? Anyone? Seeing none? Hearing none? We move on to the next order of business entitled Old Business. Old Business. Is anyone seeking recog, I see, uh, Member Garcia there, uh, seeking recognition in her orange. There you go. Please proceed.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I just, again, wanted to reiterate what a lot of people have already said, that Janet Williams, I just think that we should really, her institutional knowledge is just something you cannot, uh, bring back to any place. So, it is so, um, I'm so thankful she's still here. The DuPage County is, is, is lucky to still have her, and I just wanted to congratulate her once again for her wonderful I would move to approve DTR 27921 An Additional Appropriation for the Local Gas Tax Fund to County Unit 3500 for the Amount of $749,600.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
And Ozog.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Pachowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve DTR 28021 An Warning Resolution to HH Electric Company for LED Traffic Signal Head Replacement at Various Locations within DuPage County for an Estimated County Cost of $198,065.12 per Low Bid.
Second most favorable rule.
Leave is granted. Member Pachowski.
Thank you. Move to approve DTR 28121 An Warning Resolution to Schroeder Asphalt Services for Bloomingdale Road, Geneva Road Intersection Improvements, an Estimated County Cost of $685,153.28 per Low Bid.
Second most favorable rule.
Leave is granted. Mr. Pachowski.
Move to approve DTR 28321 An Warning Resolution to HH Electric Company for Traffic Signal, Uninterrupted Power Supply, and Communication Education Upgrades at Various Locations within DuPage County for an Estimated County Cost of $777,668.12 per Low Bid.
Second most favorable rule.
Leave is granted. Member Pachowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve DTR 46C20 Amendment to a Resolution for the Re-Execution of a Local Public and Agency Agreement Between the County of DuPage and Illinois Department of Transportation for Improvements Along 31st Street with No Change in County Cost.
Second most favorable rule.
Leave is granted. Member Pachowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve DTR 158821 Amendment to a Resolution to Copenhagen Construction for the 2021 Sidewalk Improvement Plan for a Scrivener's Error.
Second most favorable rule.
Leave is granted. Member Pachowski.
Move DTP 11521 A Contract to Max Body Shoping for Auto Repairs As Needed by Department of Transportation Not to Exceed $85,000 Which is Per Low Responsible Bid.
Second most favorable rule.
Leave is granted. Pachowski.
Lastly, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve DTP 11821 A Contract to HH Locker Inc. for Professional Construction Engineering Services Along Grand Avenue from Lake Street for a Contract Not to Exceed $658,972.45 for Professional Services.
Second most favorable rule.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Mr. Pachowski, a fine report. We move on to the next order of business entitled Discussion. We're all familiar with this provision pursuant to Public Act 990646 Pension Obligation Projections Required by the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act. Is anyone seeking recognition on this issue? Anyone? Seeing none? Hearing none? We move on to the next order of business entitled Old Business. Old Business. Is anyone seeking recog? I see, uh, member Garcia there, uh, seeking recognition in her orange. There you go. Please proceed.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I just again wanted to reiterate what a lot of people have already said, that Janet Williams, I just think that we should really, her institutional knowledge is just something you cannot bring back to any place. So, it is so, I'm so thankful she's still here, that DuPage County is, is lucky to still have her, and I just wanted to congratulate her once again for her wonderful 45 years here at DuPage County.
Very nice. I think we all, yeah, share that sentiment. That's very nice. I agree. Anyone else seeking recognition on the order of old business? Anyone? Anyone? Do I see anyone there? Please speak up. I can't see everyone here. I see member Renahan. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and I'm bringing this up under old business for a number of reasons. Um, for one, it's the 17th Annual Golf Outing is coming up for the care centers, and, um, so I hope you all will consider it. It's June 24th, 11 a.m. as you're planning out your summer at the Clarets Prairie Landing Golf Course in West Chicago. In fact, if you go online, you will see some old friends on the website, including, um, former member Noonan, member Tornatori, Larson, Kuduski, and Diciani have all attended this in the past, so I hope you'll consider it this summer.
Okey dokey. Are you gonna play in it, member Renahan?
That's the plan.
What, so what kind of, what kind of game do you got? What's your handicap?
Uh, improving.
Very nice. Good answer. Anyone else seeking recognition on the order of old business? Anyone? Anyone? I see member Chaplin.
Thank you so much, Chairman. So, um, over the past year during the height of the pandemic, people all across the country marched and had rallies and protested for justice for George Floyd. The rallies and protests have led to more than 140 pieces of new criminal justice reform legislation across 30 states, including right here in Illinois, since the death of George Floyd. So, it's a good start, and there's, um, still a lot of work to be done. So, on this one-year anniversary of the death of George Floyd, and as elected officials, I feel it's important that we continue the good work that's been done in addressing an unjust system. And when we see policies that unfairly target or penalize a specific group or groups of people in the criminal justice system, we must continue to challenge those policies. We must stay the course and ensure that best practices are in place to protect not only our law enforcement officers, but those most vulnerable.
Okay. Any other, uh, anyone else seeking recognition on the order of old business? Do I see anyone there? Anyone? 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 I don't see anyone. So, we move on to the next order of business entitled New Business. New Business.[1370.83]